Lean call order, please call the road.
Councilwoman Perkins Auguste, here. Councilman Questa, Councilman Grover, Councilman Torres, Councilman Gonzalez, Councilman Keener, Councilman Sedeno, Councilman Maza, President Call.
Here, seven member present, Madam Clerk. This is a red conference of the City Council that has incorporated to the end the media notice of 2013, which were filed in the City Clerk's office and posted on the bulletin board on December 27, 2012, and sent to a star legend on new tribute that complies with the provision of the open public legal law of New Jersey. At this time, I hope for public speaking. You have five minutes, and you had a 30-minute grace time for public speaking. My, the attorney will keep track of my time for me for five minutes per person. I will not have any interruption between two individuals. So when one person is speaking, please do not interrupt them. I will, if you do, I will strike my gathering down, just out of order. And if continued, I'll ask the police officer to have you excluded out of the meeting. At this time, any resident or taxpayer like the just City Council, any matter, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Public speaking, any tax, any resident, or any resident or taxpayer like the just City Council, any matter. You waving your hand, you gotta stand up, sir. Stand up, I, I know you like to raise your hand, but I like you. You're gonna have public speaking. Step right over on the corner there, by the corner of the table. State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Jose Tassi.
Tassi, say your last name.
Yes, T-A-S-S-I.
Okay.
Jose. I live in 630 First Avenue in Elizabeth, part of the six world. We got a few complaints referring to, first of all, in John Street, between John Street and Christine Street, is a hole in the middle of the road.
John, John and what else?
It's a hole.
I don't know, John, what street?
Between John and Christine.
Oh, Christine, okay, yeah, a hole, okay, okay.
There's a hole on the, on the road, in the middle.
Okay.
And they put a plate on it, steel plate.
Okay.
But mainly, that plate is getting torn upwards. So cars pass by and then, so it could cause any action anytime soon. Especially in that street because the cars pass by high speed, they don't respect the 25 miles per hour. We did complaints already to the city and Elizabeth Police before, and then they're still doing the same thing.
Okay.
Before, they put like a speed meter there. Probably at that time, people respect and obey the laws, but after they remove it, they go back and forth again, yes. And then, my concern, because I live there, between these two streets, my concern is can cause any actions right now, that steel plate.
Okay.
I put it see, I let it know, and then that place for five weeks already.
Okay.
Now, the other thing is referring to stop signs, single side for pedestrians, between Christine and Second Avenue.
Second Avenue.
There's a park right there.
It's what?
A park.
Okay, park, okay.
I think it's O'Brien Park, I believe, I don't know what name it is, next to the First Street, it's number three. They put a parking site by the funeral site, two big pedestrian stop sign, which is, I believe, my case, because I take my daughters to the park all the time, I believe they need to put in every corner of each park, I'm speaking just my site, but I believe in the whole Elizabeth, for safety reasons, for kids. They had to put in every corner of this, of the park, pedestrian side was stop, big stop sign, because sometimes I had to drive my, my two daughters, four and seven, had to run in order to cross the street and reach into the park. Because it's a parking side and South Seventh Street, and nothing else as the Spencer Street. So the cars pass by all the time, and I believe it's supposed to be stop sign too, which is just got one, not two, and people passing by all the time. A few incidents on the school, because the cars, they don't respect, because nobody knows which one passed, which one got the preference. And then, so in the morning, when I go drop my school, because right now I got an injury, so I see every day what's going on there. And then, I would like to fix that problem there. I know the funeral probably they needed, but I believe kids need more than funeral to put, to put pedestrian stop signs. I believe in that corner, need to put more on it. Because we don't have it, and the other side of the corner, we don't have it either. That's it, that's the complaint I got right now.
Okay.
So.
Thank you, we, we certainly will look into it, sir. And I, we all here are concerned about safety around our schools and pedestrian area. So we will look into it about the stop sign and also about that hole, I'm concerned about the hole. Been there for X amount of days, or weeks, a month, but we will look into it, okay?
Aight, sir.
Yeah. Six what, Councilman?
Mr. President, the, I was the councilman that reported the, the hall. Actually, somebody called me from the owner of the mini mall on the First Avenue. So I called Mr. Perry and the word probably immediately they reported. There is a dispute between the owner of the house, that actually caused, there's a leak in somebody's property that undermined underneath the road, and that's why we have a given, and the city went there, put the plate. Apparently, they're waiting to getting whoever's responsible settle this particular event. As far as the stop sign is concerned, we don't have too many in the six ward today. The police puts, and then every couple, a week or so, it moves around. Right now, it's by John Street and Second Avenue, Mr. Tassi. That's the worst stop sign almost in the last 50 years I lived in Peterstown. Okay, there's been accident, there's been, people been seriously hurt. I even request a traffic light, you know, to prevent that that happened. But the city didn't have a $500,000 to spend. And it was approved by the police director, but we don't have the money. Until the money comes, we'll be glad to do that. As far as the concern of the children going inside the park, is each parent's responsibility to lead the children the right way. And many time, I request the police, I, I'm the one who put a study, the high speed that comes in front of your houses, 2 o'clock in the morning, and I send you a copy, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, about the people that are leaving our First Avenue. So we do have a black watch meeting, I never saw you none of my black watch meeting, and I wish you could come for the future, so you get involved with the community of Peterstown. And as far as anything else, I leave a 630 Third Avenue, which is not too far away from me, you could just walk down to me, I can come up to you, and, and you'll have a 630 First Avenue. So you should know where your councilman is, get in touch with her, and you, we did appoint you on the board also, as a commissioner. Okay, right, is that correct?
That's correct.
So you should know where your councilman is, you should be in touch with your councilman, not that I'm saying anything else, but all this thing has been taken care of.
I, I understand it's taken care of, but I want to talk to you, it's not to worry about it, but when I was in Raleigh, came back in 2009, and, and then, that was my second tour. I came back to Elizabeth, and I went to his house and I talked to him about these issues that we talked about years ago. And then I still seeing those same issues right now. I don't want to make nothing about, nothing against you, but as a councilman, when I talked to ones, I made my report, you write something on it, and nothing happened. Because I lived there for almost 20 years, but that specific area, 7 years. So I see what's going on every day now, because I'm disability right now for my job. So I can, I can see in the mornings, when I take my daughters around 5:30 or 6 o'clock PM, taking my daughter from my house to their park, so they can enjoy on the park, you know, the playground, all the places inside. And when I stop in a corner, I, I had to drive my daughters, and I sometimes had to run and drive my little ones, drive without walking, just pulling out, because a car is coming from South Seventh Street, coming straight without no traffic lights at all. So I try to understand what's going on here, because I believe the safety for us is the kids at this time. Now, the call is almost done, so Talia San came over here to speak. I tried to come over here before, but my child doesn't, I work some time, too many hours, I, I'm not able to do it, but that's my make. And I'm talking about just my daughters, I'm talking about all kids around.
Correct.
You know, and I believe this is our priority. Now, the, the call is almost over, and you can go in the afternoon from 4 o'clock and 7 o'clock at night, you will see those kids running every corner just to cross the street, because those guys, they don't care about us.
We, we will look into it, I, I can assure you that, okay? We'll get back to you also.
Aight, sir, that's fine. Thank you, Mr. Tassi.
Thank you, we will get back to you. Any other person like the just City Council, any matter, please step forward, state your name and your address for the record, please.
City Council, Honorable City Council, I'm sorry if I'm inappropriately dressed today.
Jonathan Phillips. You're just fine.
205 First.
Just give me your name, name and address.
Jonathan Phillips, 205 First Street, on behalf of Groundwork Elizabeth.
Okay.
I'm here to talk about the ordinance which is before you, invited by Councilman Gonzalez this evening regarding these new special improvement district through the Chamber of Commerce. I'm definitely an advocate of special improvement districts, serving on the steering committee and still on the Special Improvement District Board for Elizabeth Avenue Partnership. In my capacity of groundwork, I still work very closely with both Special Improvement Districts, Historic Midtown and the EAP. And I know that before you today is a new SID for tourism. When we do concentrate our efforts on this district.
It's a tourism improvement district.
Excuse me?
If I may.
That's okay.
No problem.
He's trying to say it's not a special improvement.
He said not, he want to let you know it's not an expression. I didn't want to interrupt you.
Yes.
I want you to continue, but I usually don't allow, I don't like people to interrupt us, but there was correction to be made, and we've got to go to the, at the end of your statement. Go ahead.
So it's not a special improvement district?
Yeah.
Okay, well, on this ordinance, I'm really, I'm talking about the ordinance.
That's okay, go ahead.
All right, thank you very much. And I believe that this new agency, when, when it is developed, I am hopeful that it works very closely with the other two special improvement districts, and works entirely in the city to benefit the entire city. I know that Mr. Councilman Grover is not here this evening, but I remember when we started the EAP, Special Improvement District, it was important that those who are going to be assessed, be recognized what was going to happen, and how that would affect them. And it took us a long time for the EAP to do that, we had to have a number of community meetings. I think Mr. Haas has reached out to hotels and has got that already in his pocket. So this is a, rather than a community-based SID, we're having to tax the private citizenry and small businesses, this is actually a hotel tax. And again, I support this, and with, with the conditions that it does help the entire city.
Thank you. Anyone else, any resident, taxpayer, like the just City Council, any matter, please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
We got two at a time?
I'd like to have one.
Okay.
Unless one person will speak at a time.
Yeah, you, right away. Janice Diavella, Executive Director of the Historic Midtown Elizabeth Special Improvement District, 1139 East Jersey, Suite 616, Elizabeth, New Jersey. I'm here on behalf of the Historic Midtown Elizabeth Business District, along with my colleague Elizabeth Avenue Partnership, just to express our concerns, suggestions, questions, and recommendations for the creation of the Greater Elizabeth Destination Marketing Organization, acronym GEDMO. On behalf of the Historic Midtown, along with my colleague Elizabeth Avenue Partnership, we have written a letter to your honorable counsel, along with some of these concerns, questions, recommendations, suggestions. We would like to express our concern and appreciation for your time and consideration on these matters pointed out specifically to counsel.
Yeah.
We have a copy for each one of you.
I'll let you know that we're not gonna elaborate or make comments on, on your letter tonight, but we will take all your comments and concern, and we'll receive them, we'll collect them, and we'll, at a later date, my colleague and I will, thank you, my colleague and I will get together and we'll review them, and then we'll get back to you. No matter.
We appreciate all your time and consideration, I hate to interrupt you, President.
We will, we will get back to you on a timely note. But we will not elaborate on any one of, anyone's comments, data, review us tonight. Anyone else like to speak to the City Council, on any matter, please step forward, with your name and address for the record.
Hi, Dave Strodeck, Executive Director, Elizabeth Avenue Partnership, 913 Elizabeth Avenue. As Janice said, I'm here today to express our concerns over the ordinance to create the Great Elizabeth Tourism District. Janice and myself have been doing this for 10 to 13 years, or 10 ourselves, 13 years. And we've worked extremely hard in promoting, improving, beautifying our downtowns. And we think it's very important that we are included in anything that is called destination marketing. Very important event is coming up, probably the biggest event that we've all, will ever be a part of in 2014, which is Super Bowl XLVIII. It is vital that we attract those millions of visitors that come into the hotels to our districts, to our restaurants. I mean, Elizabeth is phenomenal, our culinary, our culture, our shopping. You know, it's all well and good that they go to the hotels, and they go to Newark Ironbound, and then they go to New York City. But we don't want to be left in the dark, we work too hard. We are seven months, seven months out of a Super Bowl, where, I mean, the numbers are countless. Millions of people are becoming in here. We need to get those dollars down here, we need to put together a unified effort, working together to bring these people down. And we feel we should be a part of anything that's destination marketing, anything that's included with the city, bringing people to the downtowns. So again, I have also a.
Yes, literature, what, you guys are up?
Yes, I have literature for you guys, and we're not here to debate, you know, for you guys to peruse, and we appreciate, you know, anything that's development, anything that's, you know, forward-minded, but we want to be included.
Yeah, pass that around, just, thank you, thank you, Dave.
Thank you, sir.
Dave, you finished, Dave?
Yeah.
Dave, you're done?
Mm-hmm.
You finished?
Thank you.
You're okay?
Yeah.
Sorry, anyone else, like the just City Council, any matter, please state, step forward, state your name and address for the record. Any resident or taxpayer like the just City Council, any matter, please step forward, state your name and address for the record.
Gordon Haas, 27 Decker Avenue, Elizabeth, New Jersey.
Good afternoon, Mr. Haas, how are you?
Good afternoon, Council, how are you? The ordinance that's before you, which I responded to two sets of questions while I was away on vacation on sabbatical for the last month, has been crafted over a period of a year. A year ago, we went to see the mayor about tourism assessment. The assessment, the mayor had told us at that time that we had the, if the hotels requested it, we would be able to come before your honorable body. I spent a year meeting with the hotels to work this out. Obviously, the monies that would be raised would be used in the city of Elizabeth to promote the city of Elizabeth, including both SIDs. And I suggest that my honorable colleagues in the SIDs would have been nice enough to suggest and show me this letter before this evening. There is a problem that I've been discussing, I spoke to several people here in the city, including the mayor, today. The SIDs are suggesting that they sit on the board of this organization. If they are to be beneficiaries of the monies that are collected by this organization should the ordinance be passed, they cannot sit on the board and make decisions as how the money is spent. There is a federal law against that, it's called Enorman, for those of you who are lawyers in this room, otherwise you can look it up and see what's going on. You cannot make a decision on the board of an organization that benefits your organization as a whole. Obviously, I've worked with both of these organizations in the past in promoting their district, and that I continue, continue to do. As I wrote to you in an earlier letter, and I assume you've all seen the responses I've given you, the Elizabeth, Great Elizabeth Chamber of Commerce has promoted this city far and above local districts. We were responsible for the wayfinding signs that are now found throughout the city. We were responsible for a magazine that comes out every two years that promotes this city. 7,000 copies are given out in that period of time. We were responsible for Exit 13A, shop, play, and stay, neither of which hurt either of the two business districts. We created a restaurant guide, a visitor's guide, for the entire city of Elizabeth, including both of the SIDs. We never singled out an SID and not included it. Our goal, the budget that was presented along with this ordinance is a tentative budget, obviously not knowing, we're basing numbers on two years ago, on complete year, not knowing how much, as I indicated to you in the letter that I wrote you, I believe, a week ago or two weeks ago. The budget will be presented to council December 1st, according to the ordinance. We work on a fiscal year, with the delays that have occurred in this, if this ordinance is passed, the earliest monies will be collected will be in August, rather than July. We will have two-thirds of a quarter, we'll have to extrapolate, we'll lose the month of July, which is a good month. The other point, thing that I want to point out to you is, the 1% or 1, or half percent that we're collecting from the hotels are, are going to this fund, and we anticipated, I believe in the, in the information that we've had, $450,000 is what we estimated will be taken in. The city of Elizabeth will gain at that same period of time if we increase occupancy and increase rates. I believe the city of Elizabeth collects 3% or 4% of the tax that's collected now. So if those things go up, the city stands to gain. If we bring in $450,000 at three times that amount, the city will gain. So the bottom line is, I heard the councilman say there's no $500,000 for a traffic light, there'll be a million plus coming into the city on an annualized basis through increased occupancy. Also, Councilwoman, you're always interested in jobs? When the hotels are busy and occupancy goes up, they will hire more people.
You don't know those people being hired from the city.
No, but we can have some leverage with them to talk about it.
So we need to have a jobs program, this unemployment program.
But the bottom line is there, there are, we've talked with the people from Elizabeth Works about create, and Union County College, about creating a hospitality program there, train people for those jobs. So the bottom line is, a lot of work has gone into this, a lot of work has gone into preparing this. I wish my colleagues on the SIDs had reached out to me. Obviously, I've been away for four weeks, so I couldn't reach out to you. But the bottom line is, this is a win-win for the city of Elizabeth, and.
I have three, three minutes.
And what do I have, five?
Three.
Three left?
Three minute, three, no. Oh, five minutes, oh, no, sorry. Is it, I thought you had three minutes, but no.
So let me, let me wrap up. The bottom line is that this is a win-win for the city. It's going to promote this city. The hoteliers were thrilled by the idea, because they look at it as raising the quality of the number of people coming into the hotels, therefore, they were able to raise their rates. And they, they were very excited by it. I mean, they were the ones who said they wanted the 1% and the half percent. The half percent, obviously, because the Jersey Gardens, the mall, the mall hotels are getting the 3% franchise fee in addition. I'm here to answer questions if they come up. If not, I would hope that you will look at this as a reasonable request. And again, I'll say that my colleagues at the SID, trust me on this, you guys are not going to be left out of this. We will promote your Christmas, your Revolutionary War, your car show, all of the things, and maybe even get back the music that you used to have on Thursday nights.
Okay, thank you, Gordon.
Thank you.
We have about five more minutes left on our half an hour.
Can I just say, if you could, just 30 more seconds of your time?
Let me find out if anyone else.
Okay.
If anyone else is gonna speak, Janet, I, I'll let you know. I usually don't allow a person to come back again.
Oh, okay.
If you have five minutes in the box, if your five minutes haven't expired, so if no one else wants to speak, let me ask that question first. Anyone else like the just City Council, any matter? Any matter, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Okay? If, if not.
Did you want to speak?
Yes.
You'd be still in public speaking.
Okay, five minutes.
Oh, okay, um, I'm gonna go with that.
Come forward, state your, state your, you ready, you ready to speak, ma'am?
I'm ready to speak.
I still over that corner, state your name and address for the record.
Um, my name is Brenda Greenhouse, my address is 1033 Jefferson Ave. I live Elizabeth, New Jersey, I just moved here, be a year next month.
1033?
Yes.
Welcome, thank you. Janice, you want to speak?
Uh, I want to say, um, it's a chemical smell, which is, um, I'm getting two different types of answers for it. One is supposed to be a coke lab or a meth lab, and I think that it need a better way of dealing with it, because I've just called diapers, and that's my only way of getting help, the best way for me, is calling diapers.
Really?
Um.
1033 Jefferson Ave, that's on the other side, I know where she is.
So I, I called diapers, and what happened is, if I smell it, um, well, actually, one time I smelled it, and I called diapers, and they actually was, came out. And what's going on with it is that the people who have it is making it, you can smell it right now, and then they can take it away, which makes it, I guess, harder for them to be able to do a job. But if you ride down the street, it's also a chemical smell. And I also reported the corner stores, Puerto Rican stores, had odor in it, which now, I went into the store, the odor is not as strong as it was. So I just think that a better way of doing it, because I have a child, and I don't want to have to keep moving, because it's like my third time having to pack my stuff and move. My first time, I left everything, unaware what was going on. What I mean now, I left everything that he had, I had, as far as belonging, and I had to stop my education. The second time, it was on the borderline for me finding a place to go because of that. It seems like people who don't deal with drugs are the ones that getting hurt.
Can you guys know the address?
I have 1033 Jefferson Ave.
1033 Jefferson Ave.
Right, she have a diabetes case.
1033, I'm sorry.
She, she have a diabetes case.
1033, right.
1033 Jefferson Ave.
Can you just give us some information, because you don't want to say the angles is over the.
Do, thank you.
Yeah. Can you just speak to the, the clerk, the city clerk over here and give her the address?
Okay, I, no, I also want to speak, I have more to say.
Oh.
I also walked into the police department, I also called 911. I did the management that I had to do, I also had the inspector coming out. It's just, it takes a long time for the process to go through. And as the process is going through, if it happened in January, and you still going through it in May, and it's still a process, I had to figure out a way so that I can get the cops to my house. The first time, I had to do it, I worked from home, I had someone from my company call the cops for them to come in. The second time, I just left it. So now, it's like I'm coming up with ideas, and I know it's my job to help, but I feel like it's a process that's too long.
Ma'am, I'm your councilman, and if I hadn't known about it, I naturally just moved into the city, and I want to say welcome to the city. Had, had I known about it, I really would have just been different. But now that, that you have brought to our attention, I'm gonna leave you with my number, City Clerk, matter of fact, I'm gonna give you my card.
Okay.
Before you leave.
Okay.
And you, you, you call me.
Okay.
Do that for me?
I will.
And I'll, I'm gonna follow this, make sure I follow up with, on this, because I'm quite concerned. Not only for you and your kid, but everyone in that neighborhood. I go through that periodically, through, basically, I, I might not be there at the time you get there, because you said come to go, right? You know, come to go.
Right, right. And I also spoke to a state trooper who, I had a conversation of my past history, who told me you shouldn't have to move out your apartment.
Exactly.
To allow them to be able to do it, because this lady that's doing it, she moved from around the corner to over here. She led me from, she moved from New York to. And I'm doing everything I could do to stop it in a way to let her know that I'm not trying to hurt your, you know, what you're doing, but you're hurting what I'm doing here.
Right.
I'm moving in a positive direction, and what she doing, I had to call a diabetes ticket. That's, I'm done.
Okay. I'm gonna use my card, make sure, we'll follow up on that, make sure you call me.
All right.
Okay. Don't forget.
I'll another.
City Council, make sure you, make sure you follow up.
And my super officer arrived, we didn't know what was going on, he told me just to go to the counter, that's all he could do.
Now, that concludes our 30 minutes for, for public speaking. At this time, I'm gonna close that, this portion of the meeting. Give flowers, correct the few minutes.
Okay, well, I would do the same, Mr. President. Why are you doing that, maybe, um, Janice was so comfortable?
I, I, I explained to everyone, I gave you five minutes, and I'm not going to be leaving it. At this time, I close this portion of the meeting.
Your lines just kind of ran out.
Close the portion of the meeting. At, at this time, a few comments have been made towards the tourism ordinance we have before us, and I said before, we will not become a question and answer section, not tonight. Each, each council member has received information you guys have presented to us. We have some, like, it seemed like might be the same thing, I'm not sure, until I can give you the quite detail. But certainly, we will review this again and again and again, along with the attorneys, and make sure we get back to you on a timely fashion. We heard from Gordon Hoss, Hoss, I'm sorry, and we will add his comments to the memo that we have before us, and each council will have a chance to submit their thoughts to me and to us, and we'll cut, get back to you guys at a timely fashion. I know Councilman Gonzalez has been following this quite well, and if he want to make just a few comments, I'm going to allow him to do that, and then we'll move on.
Thank you, Mr. President, I appreciate that very much. First of all, I don't know if everybody did get a part, a copy of the budget for this tourism district. I don't think council was privy to that at the, when we received the ordinance, so I'd like to distribute that so everybody can have a copy.
Thank you.
Of how that, there's a breakdown for that. And, Mr. President, you know, I initially had reservations about needing to establish this tourism improvement district for many of the reasons that Mr. Hoss elaborated tonight. They've been doing much of the promotion, and I thought that was the role of the Greater Elizabeth Chamber of Commerce, was to promote the city of Elizabeth for the best purposes of the businesses, and they were doing that already, as well as the, the EAP and the Historic Big Town is a special improvement district. But then after thinking about it some, Mr. President, you know, I saw it was, it could be a good thing, because it establishes a funding mechanism, and I saw it as an opportunity also to work collaboratively, to do something good for the city of Elizabeth. And that's why I break some, just some minor goals that I wanted to, Mr. President, was to make sure that that money is spent here in the city of Elizabeth, and those that are part of this board of directors in particular are from the city of Elizabeth. There are people there, CEO of the regional partnership of Newark, and I requested that they be persons from Elizabeth, and I got a response of, well, what about somebody else from Newark? Well, no, I think we have much talent here in the city, and we have many people that have invested interest in the city of Elizabeth, that they're the ones that should be on this board. I suggested, as an example, Melly Mel Productions. He does the biggest festival here in the city of Elizabeth. He's a promoter, he does great marketing, why can't he? Many of these organizations, they're all part of the Greater Elizabeth Chamber of Commerce. Now, Mr. Hoss is saying that there may be a conflict. I'd like an opinion from the law department as to whether that's the case or not. I had other questions in terms of the improvement district. My, my understanding is improvement districts are geographic area. This is just the addresses of hotels. Is that, is that okay? I don't know. Then we talk about conflicts, and I asked, who's going to run this? Are you going to hire an executive director, somebody? The answer was no. Well, then who's going to run it? If the CEO of the Greater Elizabeth Chamber of Commerce is going to sit on the board, is he going to run it? I think that would be a conflict. So is the chamber going to run it and also be on the board, on the board and be the executive director of it? I mean, there's just a lumber of different, I won't elaborate on everything, but I certainly want the categories on the board of directors to be expanded, to include if possible. If it's a conflict, you know, I hope not, because I think we're going to lose a great deal of experience and knowledge that we have of two SIDs, and others, EDC also can be a part of this, so. So I hope everybody really, you know, looks into this very carefully before we move forward, because I had a number of concerns even with the hoteliers and non-hoteliers. I would have preferred that the balance would have been that the non-hoteliers had the majority. But I can understand since the hotels are putting in the money, they would want the majority, that's okay, but I don't think they should have more than one vote on that board, extra. And right now, it sits six hoteliers, five non-hoteliers, and that's okay, but there's talk about expanding the hoteliers, but no talk about expanding the non-hoteliers. And I think that should expand as the hoteliers expand as well. So I, I have a number of still concerns, and Mr. Hoss did address some of the concerns, but we've gotten to come to an agreement, pretty much on anything, so. I just hope, and I have something here I can share as well.
Yes, I'm going to share with us.
I don't have copies of it, but I can.
All right. Later on, we make copies, make sure that we all have a copy.
I will give it to the city clerk.
And add that to whatever they gave us, okay? Along with the budget, we had to copy the budget. Yeah, Councilman, can?
Yes, this is obviously a very important subject.
Yes.
And I did, I did appreciate hearing from everybody today in the public portion of the meeting, but I think the, the subject warrants an opportunity for council members to be able to address the interested parties on the various issues. We're not going to be able to get to all of Councilman Gonzalez's issues tonight, let alone issues and questions that other council people might have, so I'm wondering if it's a possibility before this is actually placed on the agenda for an opportunity to convene some sort of meeting to go, to go over this issue.
Well, that, that's what I intend to do. Like I said, with all the data we have received.
Right.
We're going to dissect, dissect that, and we'll discuss it at a later date, and be, and come up with it, hopefully come up with a clear resolution of what we feel. Now, there's a concern, I have, I've always had the concern, Mr. Hoss brought it this afternoon, indeed, and I, I won't elaborate on that, about the conflict of interest. And I, I, you know, if the attorney want to address it now or later, fine, but we will get the answer to that, I'm pretty sure, we'll get that, find that out. Once we find that out, then we'll know whether we can move forward from either the organization to be placed on there, because I, I don't think they would, I, I don't, I don't think they would want to be on there, if they're going to be a conflict of interest, because it would defeat the purpose. But certainly, Councilman Gonzalez had named several other persons who possibly be named on the board, and, and believe it or mean, I compared with some of those names, so that as long as they're not going to cause a conflict of interest. He mentioned Melly Mel, now, he mentioned others, now he didn't name them all. He and I have been constantly discussing this periodically on and off, because the way I like to operate, I don't like to hold up an ordinance for, for eternity, and, but when you're trying to do the right thing, I think we're trying, we're trying to do the right thing here for the city of Elizabeth, for all parties, and, and that's ring by, obviously, I, I didn't mind holding this up, I could make sure we did it right and got it right. So, Councilman, I think pretty sure, once we get all this data together, we will.
Mr. President, with, with all due respect, the only point is that, that I, I think that it's important that we have all interested parties. Mr. Hoss, Mr. Dablo, right? Okay. I, I think that it's very, very important, a very, very important project, and if city council lacks in a vacuum, try and hash things out. I may have some additional questions that I would appreciate, but, but I think that we need the input from all of the interested parties and...
Well, that's what I said, once you, once you, have you been able to read all this document so far?
I, I, we just got it, but I just can't.
So once you read this, if you tell me that we need to bring them in for more questions, we'll do that.
Okay, fine.
Okay? That's what, that's what I'm looking at.
Thank you, Mr. President, I appreciate it.
And that's what you understand?
Right.
Okay. Right? That's what I want to do. At least, let's go through what they have submitted to us first.
Got it.
And once we kind of get that through our mind, and we all discuss ourselves, and if we have more additional questions, we'll reach out to all of them again. And I will not, it wouldn't be right, and I wouldn't allow it to take place unless I have all of them here again when we ask a particular person a question. Make sure they all, you're in the same room.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay? Councilman, Councilman Mazza?
Mr. President, almost the entire sixth ward is, should be in a tourism, whatever we call this new group that will eventually improve a district. Because I think Gordon is going to do a good job if it will be the gentleman to be appointed opposition, and it's something that is important, as Mr. Strocheck mentioned, next year's a big year, not only 350 years for Elizabeth, but also the Super Bowl and everything else that's going to bring revenue to the city. I think we should put all those differences aside and work for the betterment of our city. And I think if, the sooner we do that, the better it is. And I actually, I read the, the packet that I received a long time ago, I said it's a great thing. There might be some, either jealousy or disagreement among the certain people, let it be, but we're looking for the betterment of our city, and if I could get the light, Gordon, I really appreciate, you know, at the money end.
I can't guarantee you. That'll come out, that'll come out of the gentleman, you know.
Thank you.
Councilman, I don't blame you, I know you're all the way in for it.
He wants the light.
It can't come out of the tourism money.
Along, along with that, you got to put a stop sign first.
I know, but we're trying to do that.
I need, need a stop sign on, on, on what's it, John and Kristine.
Yeah, but, Mr. President, it was there, they just moved from Kristine to John, and then they're going to move to Amory.
Uh, Councilman?
I guarantee they're going to have enough money.
Thank, thank you, Councilman, Councilman Gonzalez, you want to add something?
Yeah, just, the only last thing I want to say is that I, I did invite, you know, the guests to sit from EAP and SID and Groundworks, only because I started asking around who was aware of this ordinance that was being introduced to council, and nobody knew about it.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it, true, okay. All right. Since everyone else has made remarks, I'm not going to leave the other two colleagues out. Councilor Tori, have anything you want to add to it? Councilman, Selenya?
The only thing I want to add is, you know, I, I just agree with you, Council President, just to look over all the documents that's been presented before us, just to see the big picture, hear all the different perspectives on it, but without question, whatever's best for the city of Elizabeth, I feel as though everyone in this room wants what's best for the city of Elizabeth. So I look forward to reading all the letters. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Ready to proceed? Yep. Thank you, guys, thanks so much, just thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Counsel, thank you.
Take care.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, very happy.
Thank you.
Gordon, take care.
Thank you.
Welcome back home.
Thank you, Gordon.
Take care.
It's all right. We came with you. We came with you, Mr. President. Yes, we came with you.
Thanks for your time, guys. Thank you.
We will get, we'll get back to you.
Okay.
That's the second street.
Delana, you have it. No, I don't have his number, he's a commissioner.
Commissioner's, that's what he friends with. Anyway.
Yes. Okay. Letter dated May 13, 2013, from Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Cherry Valley Tractor Sales, Marlton, New Jersey, for the purchase of parts and repairs for lawn and ground equipment for the period May 9, 2013 through June 28, 2013, at a cost not to exceed $25,000.
Any questions? Where are they?
Letter dated May 13, 2013, from Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Firefighter Run Limited, Sparta, New Jersey, for the purchase of SCBA parts for the fire department at a total cost of $32,061.30.
Any questions? Where are they?
Letter dated May 17, 2013, from the Business Administrator, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to enter into and participate in the Bergen County Cooperative Pricing System at no fee for the purchase of a stump cutter. Sample resolution is enclosed.
I'm just going to make a quick comment. I know the stump cutter they have, I guess it's still there, it's kind of getting old, and we get a new stump cutter in place to get rid of all the, I have to tell you guys all the work the chief department has been doing since the aftermath of Sandy. They really need this, this equipment, that quicker.
Letter dated May 17, 2013, from Business Administrator requesting authorization for the renewal of insurance with Western Rural Insurance Company, Ramsey, New Jersey, through agent of record, Hughes Plumber Associates, covering emergency medical malpractice liability insurance for the EMS employees for the period June 15, 2013 to June 15, 2014, and an annual premium of $7,850.
Any questions? Where are they?
Letter dated May 17, 2013, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Pierce Manufacturing, Inc., Appleton, Wisconsin, for the purchase of one Pierce Manufacturing Model 222 Pierce Arrow XP Pumper, with options for the fire department at a total cost of $440,038.10.
Any questions? Where are they?
Letter dated May 17, 2013, from the Business Administrator, recommending awarding a contract to the Sherwin, Sherwin-Williams Company, Cleveland, Ohio, for the purchase of traffic paint for curbed street, streets and traffic lines for the period May 16, 2013 through May 16, 2015, at a cost not to exceed $50,000.
Any question?
How quick can they come?
Well, you, you probably feel like I do, I, I've been asking for them to freshen up paint on stops, acrosswalks, and set or set a curb, so you probably can say, well, like, Council, curb. Yeah, okay.
So hopefully with this, they can do the entire curb.
Yeah. The fire. You're right, okay. That's what, like, Council, that's what I've been asking, we'll see.
I also, we have the ordinance, or tried to do an ordinance regarding parking.
But, yeah.
They moved that from pity into twenty...
That's something we need to work on, Councilman, Councilman Gonzalez and I have kind of brought it before, it's something we need to revisit again.
Can we try to revisit it, because people are complaining about, you know, the lack of parking.
I tell you what, if, if you don't mind, along with my colleague, Councilman Gonzalez, we revisit that again, we'll bring it back.
Absolutely. You know, Councilman, try my hardest.
Because they said, like, in some boards, they have those schools, like, for example, Third Ward or other places where you don't have schools, so that fifty feet from the corner, you know, and the state already made a recommendation.
Right, they gave us a...
Yeah, Council, I just could not get any support.
Yeah, I can get support, but I did the same thing.
Maybe we can revisit it, sometimes it's a harsh change.
Okay, all right. Revisit it, don't bring it together, we'll put it together, and we'll bring it back before everyone, they will can talk about it, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President, I just want to add quickly, too, going along with, Councilwoman Patricia Kirk, Pat, for the shortened version. No, I know that they're hesitant to paint the yellow lines as well, due to the fact of the potential change, so technically, we wouldn't even be able to paint that, the yellow lines, until that ordinance is resolved, just because if not, they're going to have to go back and fix it all over again. So I just want to encourage you guys, you know, I, I think you have everyone's support here.
We're, we're trying to speed that up, make that for you guys quickly, because I, I don't think it has to be.
Especially with traffic, since we have new personnel in traffic, maybe they'll have a different mindset when it comes to that.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Letter dated May 20, 2013, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding contracts to Global Care of BFI, Marlton, New Jersey, in the amount of $3,732.96, and Exampleist Corps Care of BFI, Cypress, California, in the amount of $1,614 for the purchase of furniture for the police department, totaling $5,346.96.
Any questions? Where are they?
Letter dated May 21, 2013, from the Business Administrator recommending awarding a contract to Antitactical, Inc., New Cumberland, Pennsylvania, to purchase 30 LWRCI Model M6SLG rifles and three each Model M6G rifles for the police department, in the amount of $56,632.74.
Any question? Where are they?
Letter dated May 21, 2013, from Chief Financial Officer advising that additional grants may be appropriated in the 2013 State Fiscal Year Budget by Budget Amendments, Chapter 159.
Any questions? Where are they?
Letter dated May 21, 2013, from Chief Financial Officer advising that transfers for the 2013 State Fiscal Year Municipal Utility Budgets may be necessary.
Any questions? Where are they?
Letter dated May 21, 2013, from the Chief Financial Officer recommending that your honorable body hereby request the Director of the Division of Local Finance to make the following estimated corrections in the 2013 municipal budget, to account for the city's local share of grants approved subsequent to the adopted budget, matching fund city share from $785,614 to $766,150. Local share municipal alliance grant from zero to $19,464.
Any questions? Where are they?
Letter dated May 13, 2013, from the Acting Director of Neighborhood Services, requesting permission to have a lien placed against the property situated at 172 Reed Street, Elizabeth, for the demolition of said premises in the amount of $19,800.
Any questions? Where are they?
Letter dated May 13, 2013, from the Acting Director of Neighborhood Services, requesting permission to have a lien placed against the property situated at 256 Second Street, Elizabeth, for the demolition of said premises in the amount of $23,800.
Any questions? Where are they?
Letter dated May 13, 2013, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting to amend the resolution dated May 8, 2012, which approved a required resolution of need for E-Port Family Homes Urban Renewal LP, specifically to reduce the number of units from fifty-two to thirty-six, and to reduce the number of buildings from three to one on the property located at 158-168 First Street. Eight units will be dedicated as special needs housing for the homeless, and there's a sample resolution attached.
Inasmuch as I know I got beat up a little bit last week about housing homeless or homeless, I mean, here we are doing a great deed for the city of Elizabeth, for the homeless, right? Right?
None of your voice.
None of my voice. But apparently, 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 it must be, apparently must be zoned for. That's my point.
But it's not supposed to be zoned. It's not zoned.
Well, it's, 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 it's approved.
You're good, Mr. President. I like you.
It's approved. It's approved, rather than, anyway, trying to put it where it hasn't been approved. Okay, put it on.
Make sure you show her that next time she comes up.
I, I, I will mail it. By the way, she's a little 2:30. She's a little... Give her a shout.
Okay. Letter dated May 15, 2013, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to execute any and all documents necessary and appropriate to modify the deferred payment loan rental housing program loan to Y Homes, Inc., Elizabeth, and YMCA of Eastern Union County, dated March 8, 2011, at an original amount of $779,867, specifically to increase the loan by $198,781.80, to provide further for testing, removal, and replacement of the stand height, as well as additional emergency lighting, elevator vent, and et cetera, which combined with another modification raises the amount to $1,208,420.5.
Any questions? For me?
Is this, yeah, the man strangled the lady in that area?
This was...
Remember too? Like, the people saw, felt the man who killed one lady, he strangled two ladies.
I remember it, but I know.
Yeah, this is, wasn't it inside their home? Was this the main building?
Oh, this is the main building?
Oh, this is the main wide building?
It's the main building.
House and... For one homes.
But I don't know if this was the address, Counsel.
Oh, okay, you're right. No, it's the main building. This is the ultimate. But they house people there. Okay.
You okay?
It was a regular residential place. I don't think it was owned by the Y.
Right.
Yeah.
That's owned by the Y.
The regular house?
Yeah. I think that was, I think that was, that was... Thank you.
You okay, Counselor?
What's going on? Yeah.
You okay?
Yeah, it's okay.
Okay, letter dated May 19, 2013, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting authorization to utilize urban enterprise zone assistance funds for the commercial district security program to provide funding for the walking police patrols throughout the following business districts, Elizabeth Avenue, Broad Street, Morris Avenue, First Third Streets, Bayway Avenue, Almore Avenue, and Historic Central Railroad Station. Additionally, an extra duty police supervisor will be utilized during peak shift hours to manage and oversee the various UEZ walking patrols for the period July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2014, in the amount of $260,249.60, with the city providing a 20% match in the amount of $65,062.40, for a total project cost of $325,312.
Any comments? Yes, Councilman?
I have a question, Mr. President. Do we have a say so? I see it says First and Third Street. Do we have a say in how far on that street do they go?
I think they have it mapped out.
Was it mapped?
Mapped out where the UEZ zone, if you will, perimeter, really. So there might be, you could check and find out if that's where they are. I'm pretty sure they have it accurate, but there's no, there's no harm in you looking, investigating, just to make sure. You understand?
And where did that from?
Uh, maybe on Ray's. Right, right.
Because they go to Elizabeth Avenue, like, all the time.
But we do have a boundary, in other words, like, they're mapped out.
I remember Manny expanded it.
Counselor, if you wanna either call me or direct a raise, we can help out there.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, Counselor. Very good.
Okay. Letter dated May 19, 2013, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting that your honorable body authorize the urban enterprise zone administration budget in the amount of $220,000 from UEZ uncommitted reserve funds. In addition, grant authorization to enter into an agreement with the Elizabeth Development Company for the administration of the City of Elizabeth Urban Enterprise Zone Program and the UEZ second generation funds, for the period of July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2014.
Any questions?
Mr. President, when are these funds going to be found?
You know when it goes, when I, ever? Hope never.
Yeah. Yeah. The answer is, we have some very dedicated staff that's doing the best to make sure that these funds last as long as they can. I wish I could give you a more detailed answer than that, Councilman, but I can't.
I think maybe it just matters to spend the money wisely, make it last.
Thank you. Letter dated May 19, 2013, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting authorization to utilize urban enterprise zone assistance funds to fund the salaries and benefits of two police officers assigned to duties exclusively within Elizabeth Urban Enterprise Zone, which includes but is not limited to all of the city's business districts for the period July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2014, in the amount of $209,327, with the city providing a 20% match of funding in the amount of $52,332, for a total project cost of $261,659.
Any questions? Where are they?
Letter dated May 19, 2013, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting that your honorable body consider approving UEZ second generation funds for the UEZ Financial Lending Program Phase 7, for the period July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2014, in the amount of $1,456,640.
Any questions? Where are they?
Letter dated May 20, 2013, from the Director of Planning and Community Development, requesting authorization for the proper city official to reprogram the unexpended balances to the Community Development Block Grant Holding Account as listed on Schedule A, attached here to and made par hereof, in the amount of $3,384.66.
Any questions? Where are they?
Letter dated May 8, 2013, from the Director of Public Works, requesting permission to have liens placed against properties listed on Schedule A attached here to, for the boarding up of said properties in the amount of $3,667.30.
Any questions? Where are they?
Letter dated May 8, 2013, from the Director of Public Works, requesting permission to have liens placed against properties listed on Schedule A attached here to for the removal and disposal of debris from said properties in the amount of $1,667.99.
Any questions? Where are they?
Letter dated May 15, 2013, from the Director of Public Works, requesting authorization for the proper city officials to apply, accept, and sign all appropriate documents. For the U.S. Department of Transportation, 2013 National Infrastructure Investments, Tiger discretionary grant with anticipated funding, the city proposes reconstruction of fifty traffic signal systems at intersections throughout the community for an amount not to exceed $18 million.
Any questions? I'm just excited to see the Public Works Director jumping on this Tiger grant. I had got email about it and read up on it, and I think it's a good thing for the city. We know eventually we might be able to get Mr. Mazes, uh, five hundred thousand.
What is that?
Eventually.
Eventually. Maybe we might get a collection or something.
At the playground.
Mr. President?
Yeah, go ahead.
I know it mentions here about television cameras. I know that in the past it was discussed that there were gonna be some cameras from the police department installed in different areas throughout the city. I just wanted to know if there's been any advancement in that, because I know that they were, at that time period, they were looking into it, and I know personally, back then I spoke with the director, simply because I wanted to see if we could get one, a Newark Ave near Virginia Street, like, heading towards Newark, to put a camera there by Wilton Park. But I'm not sure if there's been any progress.
I don't, don't know if it has been, but I do know this, one of the things, I don't think they stopped it. Last time I had a conversation with the police director on that matter, he had indicated that before, earlier in this phase, they didn't have been monitoring the system. But the last time I spoke with them about it, they were still monitoring the system. So otherwise, they'd be more active, so we can make sure that they was on top of it. Now, whether they expanded the fighter out to where, out on that area, I'm not sure. Don, if you know?
Yes. Thanks, Mr. President. If Counselor might get to you. Please. I just wanted to bring up the point that, to answer your question, Councilman Sedena, there is a, the city received a DOT, NJ DOT grant that specifically covers the Newark Avenue and North Broad Street corridors. That work has not begun because the complexity of designing and running a system that actually works and not, that is not just up, is sort of an ongoing process. And we're making great strides, but that's sort of the final phase of the project, specifically because it was the last funding component. So that being said, I can, I don't know that I can give you a specific timeframe, other than to say that it's proposed, we've received the funding, and that's sort of, you know, it's gonna happen.
Okay, great. That's, sounds good to me, as long as it's gonna happen. I'm okay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Letter dated May 17, 2013, from the Director of Public Works, recommending awarding a contract to Applied Landscape Technologies, Inc., Montville, New Jersey, for the renovations to Joseph A. O'Brien Playground in the amount of $2,262,000.
What? Morris, first is soccer field.
I didn't get a petition. That's the fifth floor, Counselor. That's a good thing happening.
This is great, Counselor, and it's much needed in that area. I can't wait till all that renovation takes place along with the soccer field and now the playground.
Mr. President, my people in Peterstown have been paying, I mean, the Sixth Ward, I should say, a lot of tax to the city.
Yes.
I think it's about time we do some renovation in my area.
Yes.
It's too long overdue.
All the citizens pay taxes.
I know, that's what I'm saying.
Is this gonna be a multi-purpose field?
The administration says so.
Okay.
Maybe the playground?
You think it's, Counselor? Where are they? That's what Counselor did.
Well, I'm fighting.
Much money going to the Sixth Ward.
He's buying a lot of people over there.
Who does he know?
I don't know.
Who does he know?
Hell, no.
Letter dated May 16, 2013, from the police director, recommending the installation of a pickup drop-off sign in front of the premises located at 102-110 Third Street, from Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m., and from 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Any questions? Any questions?
Isn't that it? It's the second page.
Right there, right in front of you.
You're right in front of you.
Why not?
You got too many piles. You got too many piles.
No, it's the second page. The first page, yeah.
The first page, yeah.
Oh, I thought I was saying you have too many piles. Any questions? Where are they?
Letter dated March 20, 2013, from the Morris Midtown Business Association and Coco Bongo Productions, requesting permission to host the 10th Annual Colombian Independence Day Festival, to be held on Sunday, July 21, 2013, on Morris Avenue from Sayer Street to Julian Place, and Westfield Avenue between North Broad Street and Harrison Street, from noon to 9:00 p.m., with a rain date of July 28 or August 4, 2013.
Any questions?
Just one thing, Mr. President. This establishment, as you know from the ABC meeting on last night, violated some of the terms of their license in this current establishment. I don't think we should be granting any permission or extra permission for this establishment, Coco Bongo Productions, for having any other type of activities until we deal with this situation at the establishment, which violated, you know, the terms and conditions on the establishment, be it the little ones.
Well...
I mean, I'm all for all festivals, but I'm just saying that particular establishment should not be the one requesting it. I don't have a problem with Morris, Morris Avenue Midtown Business Association, but that particular establishment violated, you know...
I...
I'm just, you know...
I just don't see where the, this would tie in with their, the license at the premises on, on North Broad Street, because this is a different entity altogether. I mean, it's a festival.
Well, it's the same entity.
I hope...
What I'm trying to say is that if a person is in violation and breaking the law at one place, he or she, that's their pattern of operation, and then they're gonna continue to that, to do that. And that's all I'm trying to say.
Mr. President? David, it's okay. Just wanna share a little insight. This is their second request. I know the first time they requested it, we had tabled it, simply because it was just under Coco Bongo, and we had some concerns, and we had it tabled. I have met with the Morris Midtown Business Association, and also I made it very clear that we don't wanna go through what we went through in the past by having two festivals and all of that. And I said, you know, we would just look at and entertain anything that comes from the Morris Avenue, the Morris Midtown Business Association. From my understanding, they have met as a group, and as a group, they decided to partner with Coco Bongo. So as a group, they've made that decision. Personally, because the Morris Midtown Business Association is a separate entity, that was their decision collectively as a group of who they wanna partner with, and also because of the timing of the matter. I mean, this is already coming around the corner in July, and this is a festival that everyone has united on Morris Avenue to really be a part of. I understand Councilwoman's concerns, I really do, but I feel for the sake of keeping the tradition on Morris Avenue, for the sake of the unity with all the merchants, that they've fallen in line, for the most part, just to wanna have one festival. And it was presented the way that I have requested. I say, if it doesn't say that it's from the Morris, the Morris Midtown Business Association, we're not gonna even... we're not gonna even move forward with it. So I just want to let everyone know, this is something that they decided as a group when they met as an association.
I don't have a problem with that, but then you would, he would have the signature of the Morris Avenue Midtown Business Association also. I mean, if I'm co-sponsor something or jointly, you know, Mr. President, like you're doing the event for the Father's Day venue, you know, everybody who's on it, you know, has signatures on it. I just see this gentleman sign everything. I mean, is he the president of the Morris?
He is the current president.
So he's the president, so he's wearing two hats.
Um, but the decision was made by the group. It wasn't just a decision that he made by himself. If, that would have been a decision he made.
What, what did you guys, what did you pledge? What did you guys pledge? Council?
Mr. President, I don't have a problem with this permit application. I think it's good. I'm happy to hear that they're working together to do one festival. That's something we've wanted all along and have advocated for and is finally coming to fruition. But the only thing, I, I seem to remember something in the ABC minutes about a name change for Coco Bongo. Now, I'm wondering if that's gonna affect this permit application? And if this would be a valid permit then, if they did have some kind of name change?
Well, I don't think that change had taken place yet.
Did it? I don't know. I remember seeing in the minutes something about a name change.
They put a request in, I think.
Well, the request is for, here it says April eleventh, so at that time it was valid. So I don't know if they would.
But what it, I don't know, from a legal standpoint, the cities, I'm looking out for the cities, would this still be, if that name change has gone through.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
There could actually be two separate entities. One, one is Coco Bongo Productions, which could be an entity that does more than just operate Coco Bongo and then Coco Bongo itself. I mean, even if, even if Coco Bongo Productions wasn't listed as a co-sponsor, the, the Morris Business Association could certainly collaboratively work with him and contract with him, et cetera.
Councilor Torres, you have?
Yes, Mr. President. I don't know the history of, of their last parade, but if, if, if they don't have a history, I don't have an issue with putting it on.
All right, so we, on, on? Okay. And certainly you have the option to, next week to move forward or not?
We'll check that one thing out, Phil, right?
Oh, yeah, got it. The attorney will look into that, about the name change.
Yeah, just to make sure that.
Right. He'll get back to us and then we can.
Other than that, I'm more for.
Yeah, okay. If there's a problem with it, then we'll.
I'm more fortunate, Mr. President. I helped them work more, so.
I know you are. You work hard a little.
Association.
Yes, yes, you did. I know that.
It's like extrude the facts, yeah. Just that the fact that this person has written in citation and duly noted that he does things lawlessly.
I think he does a great job of what the various organizations do. Councilwoman, I agree with that. Okay.
Okay.
Where's for that?
Council President Gorman has requested a commendation for Reverend Lenton Buffalo's twenty-fifth anniversary. Councilman Keenan has requested a commendation for Mr. Bill Goldfisher, eighty-nine, for being recognized for making hundreds of kosher meals daily for local seniors. Also, now we have two memorials, one for William Henry Best and another one for Louise Wallace.
What's her memorial? What was it? What was it? He's had a memorial. What is, is the commendation, commendation? Okay, they gave me the wrong information. I'm sorry, girl. So sorry, no, I was told it was a memorial.
Still be surprised if I.
I said, what?
I'm looking at you.
I looked at you quite a bit, yeah.
They gave you the wrong information, Councilman.
You will?
Oh, you want it back? No. It has to be done over.
Oh, you gotta.
Oh, they did.
As a memorial?
That's what they chose. That's not. Okay. Okay, go ahead. Well, this is a commendation.
But did you have a memorial for someone else?
Yes, I do, for Miss Louise Wallace of Elizabeth.
Okay. All right, okay.
That's a definite.
That's a definite.
That's a definite.
Oh, and Mr. Derek Green?
That was on the, P. Green, Derek Pepe. That was on, I saw that name. It was on the agenda for the last meeting. It was on for the last regular meeting. Do you have one?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Are we going around? Are we just talking?
No, I think.
No, no, I'm done because these were the ones that were given to me. You can do it.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, now, what's around?
Mr. President, the firehouse at the battlefield. Every time I see somebody in the supermarket or anywhere in New York, anywhere, they ask me about that firehouse. Where are we with that?
Uh.
One last game of word that I was trying to try to keep the community abreast.
Yeah, last.
Firehouse, no, no, no.
Last conversation I had with.
Called itself a fun.
Yeah. My last conversation I had with the Police Director, Public Director and the Fire Director, both, they assured me that right now, I don't think we're going to renovate it. I think they're gonna rebuild, rebuild our own.
Brand new one.
Brand new, yeah. So that's what we.
Okay, that's great.
I think, you know, Councilwoman, I think that's kind of the best way to go.
I don't have a problem with this, maybe another.
Yes, yeah, the best way to go because with the new apparatus, now they're bigger.
They're bigger, yeah.
You understand? So we can get that, accommodate those size apparatus and that would be better for us. And also, you know that, I don't know if you know that, I asked the director, talking about the fire director, to have a truck there periodically. They do have a truck there periodically, not all day, not every hour, but periodically. And matter of fact, people had given me feedback, said, "Councilman, you're right. They do come by, they stay there for two or three hours."
Yeah, that's what I heard also.
Did you hear that? Okay.
I mean, I heard that from the firemen.
Yes, yes.
They come by to say hi to the people.
And they stay there. They stay there. No, I just say they have apparatus there for a period of time. Then they have to leave, you know, and come back, okay?
Okay, thank you. The car wash on East Broad Street, Jimmy's Car Wash, he said his sign is faded.
Where, where's this?
On East Broad Street.
Oh.
At Jimmy's Car Wash.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
There's supposed to be a sign here that says, "Don't, don't park or no parking," or something. Can we get that, I guess, retained?
Where's the sign? I'll take a look here. Just give me that one.
Yeah, right in front of Jimmy's Car Wash.
I know what you're talking about.
And are we having the fireworks on the Fourth of July? Because usually by now we would have voted on that.
I didn't.
Someone asked me about that and.
Give me a question.
It's in the first ward. It was with Sandy, a couple of people asked me, so I've been meaning to check with the administration.
I, I will get word back to you, Councilman.
Okay, thank you. And I told them I didn't know because I didn't know what we were doing down there. And last week we voted on this fire apparatus that was destroyed because of the illegal dwelling where the woman perished and the, the young person that was really injured. Can we attack the insurance company of the owner of the house to reimburse the city for the fire? For the apparatus? It was like a half a million dollars that, can we do that? Can we do that, Mr. Attorney?
That's a, that's a great question. I will look into it.
Okay. Almost just like when the trucks hit the bridges and we make them pay for whatever time allotted that our first, our police personnel did. We need to. Yeah, you know that, you're truck driver. We need to make sure that, you know, that was a lot of money and that cost, you know, in terms of that equipment. And it was solely because there was those bars on the window and they were trying to, yeah. So can we look into that and see if we can recover anything from this insurance company? An excellent.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilor Torres?
Yes, Mr. President. Is there a way, can we speed up the, the traffic study on front and court? I know they take approximately a couple of days of study if there's accidents, but my, my issue is, it's not related to car, car accident, it's the youth with soccer and football. I, I don't want to, I'm trying to avoid an accident. I'm down there almost every day. So I see the speeding, the people who just pass the pedestrian crosswalks that we have there in the middle of the, the street. So I'm trying to avoid a child getting hit, basically. So I'm asking if we could speed up the process in some way, somehow, to get a three-way stop sign on court and front, right in front of the entrance of a football field. Whoever designed the field, there's no pedestrian crosswalk. There's no, so we need to do something before a child or, or one of the coaches or an adult is hit by a car. It's not more and more accident related with automobiles, it's pedestrians. That's the, that's I'm concerned about.
There's no crosswalks?
There's no, whoever designed the field, there's no pedestrian crosswalk there. So I was there with Lieutenant Marcusson today.
Wait, okay.
Lance, I was there and we're trying to come up with something where we can speed up the process, basically, so a child is not hurt and injured.
Yeah, very close.
Correct me if I'm mistaken, but isn't it the Public Works Director who put those crosswalks down?
Yes.
They don't even go to the police. You know, they don't go to the police department. You just, you know, you work with the Public Works Director and say, "Okay, the traffic flow is heavy, then we need to put a crosswalk." I know a couple places that requested a crosswalk without doing a traffic study, you know, without. So maybe you can talk to the Public Works in addition to what you can do.
Okay.
Anything else?
Yes, the second thing is, I attended the tour there, Elizabeth, who, Mr. Jonathan Phillips was here. What a great event. I had a great time. Next year, I encourage my fellow colleagues to, to come out and participate, but I did have a great time. What a great event. I was sore for the next two days, but it was well worth it.
Oh, is that? It rained, I didn't go. It rained, I don't do it.
Were you on the bike?
And then, and last, and last reason. Last, and that reason, my condolences, I just wanted to say, my heart goes out to the families who were affected by this Oklahoma tornado.
Yes.
Tornado struck the state of Oklahoma. So I just wanted to say my condolences. Is there anything that we can do for them? American Red Cross or anything like that?
Like the Councilwoman kind of just said, we could probably do a memorial for them. You know, we, you know, just wanted to do that.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know if we do anything relief, you're talking about as far as relief.
However we could help, you know, every little bit helps.
I know we can do a memorial.
Okay. I'm done, Mr. President. Thank you.
We, want to add that as a memorial?
Yeah.
Then we had a moment of silence.
Yes, add, add it for a memorial.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Keenan?
Yeah, I want to, we got a call from a, a resident on Pennington Street. She has a twelve-year-old child who is blind and the, in order to make her more mobile, she's working what's called a disability coach so that the coach works with the adolescent in, in making them able to access their parts of the city. Specific issue is with regard to a blind person, whether or not a reasonable accommodation as per Americans with Disabilities Act would require a four-way stop at intersections around their house. So I'm gonna have the, she's gonna get me the specific address and also I asked her to contact this, this person and see if there's any either federal or state statute on this. In other words, what I'm trying to figure out is, is it covered under Americans with Disabilities Act or would it be covered under, under local ordinances? Don't know. This, this has had to have come up previously in Elizabeth because Americans with Disabilities Act was passed in nineteen ninety. If you could, if someone could check that, that would be great. That's, that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Council Mazza?
Yeah, Mr. President, I need to have a memorial for Maria DiPaola.
The what?
Maria DiPaola, D.I.P.A.O.L.A., focus aunt.
Yeah.
I also need to have apparently a police-to-be dispatcher special on a weekend to four or nine Spencer Street to allow music over the weekend, music aside from Saturday and Sunday, and people are calling the police department apparently, this is not that important, but have a number of people upset to our policemen. And the others is four or nine Spencer Street. It's a four-family house. And the owner does no longer live in Elizabeth. She lives someplace down Manchester Township, New Jersey. I did, left him a message. She goes to me, "Councilman, there's nothing I could do." You know, when I'm there, the tenants are well behaved, but apparently, you know, the tenants are by themselves and they could do whatever they want. But we have a law on the book in which after ten o'clock, the decibel of the noise must be at a certain level. So that's one. Also, Mr. President, I happened to request several times and I got a copy of the ordinance, those public service poles that they were replaced with the antenna and they left halls left and right. I have a bunch of addresses and I was in touch with Mr. Papelli, Mr. Papelli says, "Council, there's nothing I could do." He goes, "It's up to the construction department." Now, according to the law, it is, but they're supposed to get a permit. I want the, might be the law department to give out, if I give all the others, to issue them a summons because the construction department doesn't want to do it, according to Mr. Papelli. So how do we handle the situation?
The law department doesn't have the power to issue summonses?
No, no, but I, if the city council asks the law department to prepare summonses for those various poles that they, they'd like to pick up the whatever permit, you don't have to.
Done your.
I'm sure it could be done because the office that is in charge is supposed to be doing that. According to Papelli, he's not doing it. He doesn't want to do it. And he gave me a copy of the ordinance, of the law. Maybe I should call Channel Seven and embarrass you people.
Don, I think Don might, Trevi, might be.
Don Trevisan.
Don.
Thank you.
Councilman Mazza, if, if you could, one of the things I would suggest that you do is either forward the locations to my attention or to, to Mr. Sellers' attention and we'll make sure that the construction official enforces the ordinance.
Will comply. Because I know, I, I tried to Mr. Papelli and I had pitches and everything else.
Unfortunately, he's Public Works.
I know. So I give you the law, I know it falls under the construction department. He said, "Right," but my thing is, and we have a lot of the situation where if somebody falls, I mentioned thing at the last time meeting. Also, is there any way we could get some inspector for go, go after the people that are taking the dogs, let's say, to the park or for a walk around the neighborhood and they don't clean after the duty of the dog? Because they say, police, apparently, they took if you do not important thing, they don't really give out tickets, but they say you need a border belt inspector. So.
You got the health department.
Right, I understand, but then if we put a complaint, we have to get things done and that's exactly what the gentleman even before was mentioning. I request that doesn't get done. Who's fault is? It's definitely not the councilman. My conscience is clear, you know, and it's just a matter of who are we applying the law and how you do that.
Yeah, I.
Everybody wants to get paid, but everybody says, "It's not part of my job description." So let's make one job description equal for everybody. Everybody's responsible to do something.
That falls under the health department.
I know, I know, but.
Yeah, here's what I did. I, I kind of had, you know, had the same problem there once in a while. My, my first initial step was to make sure there was prompt signage around, you know, herd the dogs and blah, blah, blah. Make sure that's there. Make sure the ordinance sign around in that area. That was my first step. The second step I, I did, naturally, I notified the out-of-control and also the health department to be aware and see if we could have them to come out because I asked the, the people that would give me the report, give me a, you know, kind of accurate time that they was appearing there. I mean, was it afternoon, morning, evening? If they could kind of give me a time so we know how to dispatch the, the out-of-control unit in that area. So I did. And last good thing I did, I asked them, take pictures of the people that walk at the doors. And it did. So it was applied all that evidence to me, and I passed it on to the victim. We caught them. So sometimes you got to, I guess, be a little aggressive, a little, I guess, you know, they took pictures on it with a camera. There again, wasn't, wasn't, wasn't a professional. Wasn't professional. But the main thing is, main thing is, Councilman, it did work. It did work. Anything that makes it better for you, so you don't have to get the complaint.
Bill, I confronted several times, few people, whether it's a lady or a man, I kept telling them, we have sign, curb your dogs. And they, and spy, they got up very early, let's say 5:30, 6 o'clock in the morning, they up and run the dogs. And then either late in the evening. Sometimes during the day, they do just do it in front of you. What can you do? By the time you call the police.
Take a picture.
Take pictures.
I understand, but to take a picture, you could barely see on a picture. You need a zoomed-out camera to focus on. They show the person.
It worked, it works.
Wait, wait, wait.
And then, Mr. President, and there's another problem. I have several abandoned homes, which I have 20 and Jake Street, 45 Jake Street. Right, 20 Jake Street. 45 Jake Street was already recommended three or four months ago to do something. Apparently, the neighbors, one of the gentlemen that is there, that is actually said, Mr. Mazza, those two homes, they actually destroyed the body by property. Either the city does something, or they have to demolish. I see other areas in Elizabeth where the city demolish, and then it put $20,000, $40,000 demolition cost an individual. Whoever's responsible needs to do something for those particular addresses on Jake Street. They have to look at it. We bought it up, and then homeless people go in and out. It's an area for drug people. Again, I submit it to the city. My conscience is clear. If it doesn't get done, shame on them, because, you know, and I keep telling the people that call me in, and I call them back, I say, listen, I did my job. That's why I need a copy of the request, Madam Secretary. So I could keep a record, and I could say it was given to the city, and apparently, the city's sleeping lately. We have to wake them up and do whatever we have to do, Mr. President. Coach responsibility. When I became a soccer coach, it is your responsibility, number one, to be on the corner, get your kids, and cross them over to the street. Don't expect the police or somebody else is going to do for that. That's rule number one as a coach. No, no, I'm saying for them about the thing that I mentioned before.
Councilor, you finished?
I'm finished.
Thank you.
I just wanted to, real quick, Mr. President, is animal, can animal control issue summons?
Yes.
Yes. They can, yes. Okay.
Yes, they can, yes. That's it.
Yeah, that was it.
Councilor, Sedeno?
Just real quick, I know a big concern for all of us was the fact that the fishing derby was canceled, the city one. I know the Portuguese club was doing the second one, but it was rained out. I just wasn't sure if anyone heard of a new date or anything like that.
I have not heard.
That was it. Thank you so much.
Councilor Mazza?
Fortunately, Mr. President, I have dealt with all my issues before coming to this.
I'll be very quick. Mark, would you guys mark your date of June the 15th? It's Father's Day kind of weekend. I'm probably involved along with Councilor Sedeno as our first fatherhood initiative program. From 9:00 to about 4:00, will be held in front of City Hall. We're first going to start, really start, we're going to start in the church on Mizuver Avenue. Bless you. Bless you.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Mr. President, it's 11:00 again at the church, and then we're going to go to.
So we're going to start in the church, and then from there, we're going to march right around. I guess around, close around about 12:00.
12:30?
Yeah, 12:00. Actually, get that 12:00. You want to get that quick, so you can be fresh in line. We'll be serving some hot dog, maybe some hamburgers, free of charge. We won't caution anything. We're going to have a couple food programs, just talk about fatherhood. And I think it's a good program, trying to encourage our young men to step up to the plate and be good fathers to their own children. On the 15th, yeah. As a Saturday, as a Saturday, as a Saturday. And if you.
I'm not a father.
If you, yes, you are. Stop it. You just stop it. The other thing is, I will have flyers next time we have a meeting about my annual cookout in the park, which will be at Jefferson Park this year. That'll be on July the 13th, I thought, from 12:00 to 6:00. And everyone is invited. As you know, I'm excited when I have this cookout, because when I can see family members getting together and enjoying themselves and eating hot dog on this side and the hot dog on that side, well, I'm thrilled. And we'll be there until the food runs out. Always have a hayride for everybody in the entire family. We'll have peg zoo for kids favorite, also have horseback ride for kids up to 12 years of age. And like I said, we have a fun little day. We have a bouncy, some music, and come out and enjoy yourself. Face paint.
So real quick, next week is Youth and Government Day, correct?
Yes.
No, we have the peg.
Oh, we got money. Thanks, it's money.
But the meeting, we meet in City Council chambers at 9:00?
2:00. 2:00.
How many, 9:00?
9:00.
And the meeting's at 2:00.
Where's the lunch in there?
What? Dolce?
Dolce's.
Oh, Dolce's. Dolce, oh, you sure we go there? How much we got to pay? We got to pay money? How much money we got to pay?
How much we got to pay? I think.
What, 30?
30 dollars, you pay for yourself and your partner.
30 dollars? Wow, that's a lot of money.
30 altogether, 15 and 15.
That's a lot, that's a lot of money.
Whatever you eat, you don't get it for free. You pay. Cash Yolanda, she said. That's what Murphy said.
30 dollars?
I'm not, I want a date. I want to go by myself.
You have to have two dates.
I'll have to take two for you.
Okay. Post it to John? Good job.